Good evening. I'm Brian O'Connor, Chairman of the Strafford Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. It is now 6:03 PM. I am calling this meeting to order. I will now call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Paul Aurelia.
Present.
Sarah Graham. Alec McCollough.
Present.
We are also joined by our alternate, Ed Kingston.
Here.
For the record, William Boyd has joined us. We will also welcome Sussmita Atara, our Town Planner, Eileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. I'd like to remind everyone that we have no public hearing items for review tonight. The public is free to listen but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. If any of the members wish to discuss any items on the agenda, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. The first item on the published agenda is the approval of minutes from October 17th, 2023. I'm looking for a motion to approve these minutes.
Sarah, I'll make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Can I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is listed under three, zoning commission referrals. As a reminder, all zoning referrals regarding text amendments are considered recommendations by the Planning Commission, not approvals or disapprovals. This is in regards to text amendment petition of 225 Lordship Boulevard LLC seeking to amend Section 32, Lordship Boulevard Housing Zoning. First, I'm looking for a motion to open this agenda for discussion.
Sarah, I'll make a motion to open this motion for discussion.
Can I get a second?
Paul Aurelia, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. This time, I'm going to ask our Town Planner to just give us an overview.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, you know, before I start summarizing my staff report, it would, we have a representative from the applicant who probably can give you an overview of what they're trying to do that, at that site, and then maybe I can summarize my staff report after that.
Thank you.
Ready for me? Sorry. Beautiful night for a zoning and planning here. Sorry. Hi, my name is Ray Marizio. Happy to be here for you tonight. I'm representing 220 Lordship, 25 Lordship Boulevard LLC. We propose a text amendment. If you folks know this, you probably know the property. I've represented this group since they purchased it, it's gotta be like four or five years ago. Started off, remember that was the hotel, that was kind of a beaten up hotel, rundown hotel. They converted that into apartments. It was going very successfully. It's cleaned up the property. What they then, then, the second part of it was, they took the property behind it, which basically abutted up to the town transfer station. They built a very attractive or very nice self-storage facility, a Cube Smart, which is great because it buffers the transfer station from the apartments. We then came back before the commission and proposed a affordable application, which was approved. And we're now want to go, so the building that was approved was five stories. The regulation that we proposed, which was passed, which was approved by this commission, was for five stories. The building behind it is six stories. We, coming back before you to amend the regulation, which we proposed, to basically agree to raise the height from 67 feet to 70 feet and to allow it to go the full six stories so it matches the existing build. We've already been through ARB. ARB passed the regulation. And this, just so you know, the regulation that you see in front of you, the changes we make can only apply to this property. It can't be used anywhere else. It's, was written specifically for this property. So if you have, let me show you the difference between the two. So this is the original building that was proved. You basically have a retail area, office area, you know, common area over four stories. You get, and what happens is this building kind of towers over it in the back. The new building, which we think is very attractive, will now be, once again, over five stories. Same first floor, but over five stories and get up to 127 units. Thirty percent of the units will be affordable. It's a perfect location for it. We're not towering over any residences. You have, to the south, you have the tanks, the oil tanks. Behind us, you have another, the renovated hotel, which is an apartment building. And now we're going to put a much more, I believe, even more attractive apartment building in front of it. Great access. There's a bus line out front. There is all sorts of work there. This will help providing more affordable housing in Strafford, but also in the area where there's a large workforce along Lordship Boulevard. Great access to the, to the highway, you know, tra, public transit. It's, it's really a great spot with COVID, with the interest rates, you know. A little more density is certainly helping make this project work. The changes to your regulation are very, very minor, and I'll explain it to you. So basically, what we did was, we add into permitted uses what's already there. Pre-existing self-storage facilities, retail services and amenities, shared parking garage, because there'll be parking underneath, parking facilities, and wayfinding and site identification signs. That's all that will be permitted. Basically, it's all that's within the property. The only other thing is, we're adding, the building height is going to go from 66 to 70 feet. And the units will go up to, from 100 to 127 units. Other than that, it's pretty much the exact same regulation that this commission recommended for approval previously and one which we hope you will adopt. I think this is a great, this finishes out this project and you take a basically derelict, non-taxpaying hotel and you've turned it into a really great tax base that not only provides market rate housing, but affordable housing in the area with which you want it. It's not zone busting in the middle of residential neighborhoods. It's, it's a great location for this type of use that helps the workforce, you know, along a very, a very well-public transit oriented spot, location. And that's really my presentation. I'm happy to go through anything with you. I've lived this project for the last five years and I think this, this is the finish, the finish of it. And it's really a unique project, given its unique location.
Thank you. If you don't mind, stick around. We're going to have a, our Town Planner give us a review and there's potential for questions for you.
Sure, whatever. I'm right here.
Thank you.
I apologize for being late. 95 was an absolute mess, so.
I get it.
Thank you, thank you. So essentially, I gave you a staff report as part of the package yesterday. But then, you know, this morning, Jay Hibansky, zoning administrator, also wrote a staff report for the zoning commission. He had an interesting take on the density aspect of this. So I thought, you know, I would include that staff report also, along with mine, which emphasizes on affordability ratio and, it is not clear from the text amendment, the, what would be the unit mix of the development. The reason being, if you have efficiencies more than one bedrooms or two bedrooms, then the parking ratio would be different. So we were not able to arrive at, you know, what, what's the parking standard? Because we don't know from the text amendment what the unit mix is going to be. The second thing is, so the developer is now asking for an increase in density. Fair enough that he, they want to maximize the site's, you know, profitability. But what is the town gaining out of this? The town needs to up its affordability count. The town is at 6.34 percent, and if you are at 10 percent, you would become an exempt municipality. So you would have more local control over, you know, what kind of affordable housing developments, you know, would be located where. And no developer, you know, can come and try to override the existing zoning regulations if you're at the 10 percent. So this is the opportunity for the town to, you know, think about, what is the town going to get in return by giving 27 units more or an extra floor? The other things, you know, when the application was submitted, we only got the redlined or the new additions or changes. But we were not able to see the complete, you know, text. Of course, we do have it in our zoning ordinance and I can look it over. But it's always advisable to have everything together. Because, you know, if that's one piece and this is one piece and we are trying to piecemeal this in the regulations, sometimes things get lost in translation. So it's a very minor clerical issue. So whenever the applicant has, you know, gone through this entire process through the zoning commission, it's advisable to actually, you know, get a complete write-up of the text amendment with the new language incorporated into it, so it gets automatically input into the zoning regulations. I was also looking at the Section 32, like I printed it out on my own from Maplink online. And I wasn't, you know, I couldn't see mention of MS4 permitting. Like, it just says that all development will comply with Towns, Town of Strafford's MS4 Stormwater Management Plan. I think that's, that's good enough. Again, like, if, there is another aspect to this, land capacity. It's in a flood-prone area and you're adding 27 units more. So is, what is the carrying capacity? Jay and I were talking about this a little bit briefly this afternoon. What is the carrying capacity of this land? How much flooding can it withhold or how much stormwater, you know, can be withheld on-site before it's released? Stuff like that, that a town engineer could answer more and maybe that would come at the site plan stage in the zoning commission referral, like the town engineer would weigh on this. But in general, Jay also had his staff report and he said, "The applicant seeks to add five new users that are to be allowed on-site. Given that the site is newly at capacity, the applicant should clearly explain how the site parking sewer can support the existing proportion of future users," which I explained just now. And also regarding the allowable, maximum allowable density from 100 to 127 units, this will require an additional story to be constructed, making this a six-story building. And he says this appears to be somewhat out of context with the surrounding area. And the applicant is proposing to increase the total height from 65 feet to 70 feet. And he think, he says it's out of context with the surrounding area. But, you know, this is generally consistent with the POCD objectives. The, you know, to identify opportunities for redevelopment and revitalization of character areas, provide rental as well as owner-occupied housing, reaching the state's target that 10 percent of the town's housing stock be affordable, providing a range of housing types for all incomes and lifestyles, to increase opportunities for residents to use alternative modes of transportation, including bicycles, walking and public transportation. The original text amendment does have standards for bicycle parking in it. So we're, I mean, my staff report said it should be included, but I just noticed that it was already in Section 32. And so it's something that the commission has to weigh on. It's, it's like, in Section 32.2, this is something I brought before Jay this afternoon. It says, "The developer or its successor may change the designation of the units within the development which are to be affordable units, provided that the minimum set of sites as described in General Statutes 8-30G shall be maintained and the development as a whole shall continue to comply with all subsections of this section." What it means is that if, if by chance, the developer says, "I will provide 10 percent or 20 percent of units as affordable units in this development." And, but then the regulation says that he can change it. He can change it and go back to what is the minimum set aside for this, per statute. He doesn't have to really, you know, provide it. So it can change at a later date. So perhaps the original 32.2C should be rewritten in a manner that is consistent with what this body and the zoning commission agrees. How much of affordability would we want to see on the site and having that ratio in there?
Thank you. I'm going to turn to you guys. Do you have any questions for Mr. Boyd?
Yes, in your photo, can you put your photo up again for the fifth floor?
Sure, which one do you want to see? The existing or the approved or the new?
The new one. The question I have with the new one is, I see the extra floor. I guess it's only five foot? It's a five-foot difference, 65 to 70?
Yeah, what happens is the, they weren't sure, you know, you always ask for a little more height when we got it. So 66 feet was, was approved. I think it's going to 70. They show, let me see, I have the actual breakdown of the, let's see if I can make sure. So it's, here it is. So back here, basically breaks down the height that are reached. Basically, the reason 70 feet and six floors is the first floor is probably about 15 feet high. You typically do that on the first floor. First of all, we got to get out of the, out of the flood zone. With regard to the Town Planner's comments about the flood zone is, we're not changing the impervious at all. So it's all the same requirements. We're just going literally on the exact same footprint, upper floor. And we think improving the look, the, the look of the building to give it, to give it a little more flair.
Okay, and I, and I believe, I'm sorry.
Gaining four feet, going from 100 to 127, which gets you about eight additional affordable units. The only other, see, part of it is, without turning this into a special permit application, we're also planning on taking apart, part of what was going to be a loading area and adding additional parking. So when we go before the P and Z, we have to prove to them that we have added a parking. So we're adding additional, I think 14 or 15 spaces by removing part of the loading area, which doesn't change, like I said, the impervious or anything else. So you, you have the same box with an additional floor with additional parking, we think, to compensate for that.
And the parking is above ground?
All parking is above ground.
Okay, my, my question is, if you go to 127 units, how many would be set aside for?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
And they all have to be, just so you know, because I've actually built an affordable project myself, they have to be indistinguishable from the market rate units. They have to be the same balance. So if you're 50 perc, if you're 60 percent two bedrooms and 40 percent one bedrooms, you're going to have 60 percent of your affordable units have to be, 60 percent of your affordable units have to be two bedrooms, 40 percent have to be one bedrooms. So everything, everything, the, the whole idea is distinguishable. You can't put them all, all on one floor. They have to be sprinkled without, throughout the building. And we have to put our affordability plan has got to be, has got to pass muster with your, with your Town Planning Office and that gets recorded on the land records.
And my last question, something Sussmita said. They could start out with that 30 percent and then after the building's built, if I heard you right, they could change that?
30 percent is the minimum and that's a state statute requirement. And I'm pretty sure they have to abide by that if they're going to do that.
Okay, so that.
But I think the idea that Jay was suggesting is to ask for more because you're providing more density. And I don't know if, if the zoning commission were to ask for more, if that could be translated into the text amendment or not.
You know, it's funny, and I try to explain this to develop, because everybody will come into my office. I do a lot of zoning through all different towns and everybody goes, well, let's go and build as many units as we can. That doesn't work under affordable. And the reason is, for example, say it's 100 units. You have to build 30 affordable. Those are all big-time losers on a rent, on a rent basis and it's basically supportive housing. You then have 30 units that you make some money on to offset, to break it, basically evening. So now you're building 100 units for basically 40 units with which you can make a profit on.
Seventy.
And so, and support the project. Because you got to remember, the, the one bedrooms, I think, are 1,100. Two bedrooms are about 1,300, which is probably well below what your market rate rentals are in town. So with that, and I'm trying to explain the whole, the business perspective, it's so you understand. Because you know, here's the issue. You guys can approve something, but if it doesn't make economic sense, no one's building it. So in this issue where you have these losing rents and now you have increased, and why you have to add the density is because you have increased interest rates. You have, you know, you know what the world's like out there. So what ends up happening when you, when you go just up versus out, you get the efficiencies of scale and it allows it to be something that, in a, in a first, certainly a much different housing market than it was four, three years ago when this got passed, something that can still be achievable. So you, you really have, so you got 127, at 127 you have 13, 13. You have about almost 40 affordable units. You got to build 40 affordable units. You're going to lose money on those. You're going to maybe need the other, at least 40 to break the.
Can I pause you there? You're not going to lose money. You're just not going to make as much. You're not, they're not at zero.
You're not going to make any money on, on the cost of construction on 1,100, on 1,100 dollar one-bedroom.
Okay, but I disagree. This is over time. So over time, all I'm illustrating is, yes, you're asking us to go up and to give you a concession.
Correct.
But the, the tenor can't be, we're losing, we're losing, losing, because you're asking us for something. But we're, you want us to give you something for that and I don't think it's just a lose-lose proposition.
What it is, is it makes it more viable. So what, I, I don't want to think, look, what we did was, we worked very strongly with the town when we came in with this reg. What you see typically is, we could have come in and wrote another reg. We thought the clearest way was to say, this is the relief we need and, and I, and I don't, and I think we're going to add parking. I think you got to remember, the Planning and Zoning Commission's got to be convinced, this doesn't give us an approval. All this gives us is the right to move forward and ask the Planning and Zoning Commission for an additional, for an additional floor. With that, we have to prove that we can park it, we can drain it, we can service it, we can, it circulates properly. All it does is say, you would give a recommendation to say, yeah, go give it, you're basically saying, go give it a shot and good luck at, good luck at planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Does any, Sarah?
Do you know the number of one and two three-bedroom studio, like the breakdown of the number of units?
I don't have it with me now. I remember the old was probably, I think it was like about around a 60-40 breakdown between two and one, one and two bedrooms. And it's funny, that fluctuates all the time with regard to, depending on the housing market. So a lot of times when the housing market's really strong, you've got, you know, multiple, you know, couples selling their houses, moving into a two-bedroom. When the housing market's weak now, the one-bedrooms are like on fire. So it's, it's a really, it's a fluid kind of analysis that you have to make that decision when you go to build, build the properties. It's typically, typically is usually it's a 60-40. Strafford, usually the suburban markets, typically you like, you, with, two bedrooms are more, more preferable. And with a lot of people working remotely, a lot of people use the two bedrooms as a, you know, office or something rather than working in their kitchen.
Thank you. Mr. Aurelia?
I have a question for, actually, Sussmita, you know, developer. So I was, I was a little concerned about Jay's comment that it's out of context with the area. But then I heard that the building behind it is that same height. So just trying to understand that, because if it's, if it's the proposed building is going to be the same height as the one right behind it, I don't see it as out of context, unless he means out of context with everything else in the area.
Is it six floors?
I can't speak to that. I think he meant that nearby. I, I mean, the ARB has reviewed this project aesthetically and they have provided some guidelines.
They approved it and I think they were happy with it.
Yeah.
I guess out of context with the oil tanks probably, but. I'm just kidding.
Circular apartments, right?
Yeah, yeah, but with regard, it's, it's basically the same six floors, except we, our first floor may be a little higher because the hotel wasn't built, because of the way the hotel was. But both buildings will be six floors.
So maybe he meant the neighboring developments are not as tall, you know?
Okay, I was just confused because like, if, there's two buildings and one's already that high.
Yeah, and I think the Cube Smart's got to be at least, at least four stories tall, too. And what's been great about that and the commission, I think, both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission was great about that is that is, that has made the apartments that much more desirable. They had such a problem when they first built the, redid the apartments of paper and debris getting blown on a windy day into that parking lot. It was crazy. And the self-storage facility has been the perfect buffer, yet still generates a ton of taxes for the town and no traffic.
Right, okay. Andy, one other thing. So the 30 percent is actually advantageous to the town right now?
Yeah, I mean, there is no way you, the town doesn't have inclusionary zoning ordinance that we say that mandates developers to provide certain ratio. In the absence of it, you know, we cannot ask more. But by state statute, if they're saying 30 percent, maybe that should be spelled out in the text amendment. And I still believe, I know it's a fluid development and you, you have to consider the market factors when you're doing efficiencies and one bedrooms and two bedrooms. But the way the regulation is written, if you see 32.10 on parking, it says, "Studios, efficiency, one bedrooms, one parking space per unit and two bedrooms, one and a half." So your parking count is triggered by your unit mix. And that is something we need clarity on.
Well, that, that will be clear at it because we have to still abide by that same requirement. But that's not, that's, that'll, that'll be evident and shown when we go before Planning and Zoning Commission for a special permit, basically. So, and, and then those plans become the bible for the property and you can't shift your bedrooms around without making adjustments for parking. So it'll, it'll be clear. When we got the project approved originally, there was, it was a, a straight num, a, a, an exact number of two bedrooms, an exact number of one bedrooms. And the same thing happened with the, when, when the hotel was renovated. So that'll all be part of the special permit process. What you're doing is just giving, not just, but what you're allowing us to do by taking an action tonight, which would hopefully be favorable, you give us the ability to go forward and prove to the Planning and Zoning Commission that we can meet all these requirements. And once again, if it doesn't pass muster with the town engineer, it doesn't go. But basically, we're just ratting a floor and adding parking.
Okay, and one, one final thing, but to clarify one of Jay's concerns. Do you have any intent to go more than 127 units?
No, that's going to be, that's the limit. I mean, what's interesting is, what's very interesting, typically some towns will restrict it to bedrooms. We did this with regard to units. The units are an exact number. It's not like where a lot of your regulations talk about square footage, coverage, setback, and you build your box and you fill your box how you like. There's a, this is a hard number of 127 units that can't be changed without coming back to you for approval.
Well, that's the thing, what's, what's stopping you from coming back later and asking for more? You already got.
From you telling me, from me telling you tonight, we're, we're done at 127 and coming back and saying, well, sorry, you told us 127. That's it, that's, that's what it is. So we can't, we can't move forward with more than 127 without starting the whole process again. And then I would assume with very strong, you know, the only reason, you know, if there was some world that came about that said, well, you, you know, in that same box you could fit all one bedrooms and there's, or there's this big demand for one bedrooms versus two bedrooms or efficiencies or things. We, to achieve more than 127, we have to start the process all over. So as far as I know and as far as my clients have told me, this is it. We get this approved, that building, they're going to start, they'd love to start that building in the spring if they could.
Maybe a silly question, what prompted you to adjust the original proposal? If you're saying now the clients will not do that?
Part of it's economics. I mean, you've got, you've got, you, you have, you had three and 4% interest rates for, for a good five-year period when all this stuff was being designed and contemplated. You had construction costs which were 25 to 30% less. And then you end up with sometimes projects, when you add it, when you throw in an affordable component that hasn't risen, the rents haven't risen 30% with the, along the construction costs. So the, the hard thing about affordable is you don't, it doesn't, it, it has a very small increases. So it doesn't track inflation. So you all know what's hap, you've heard about what's happened with construction costs. They've gone through the roof. You've heard about what's happened with interest rates. So now you got a double interest rate, but from when this was approved. And you have a 30% increase in construction costs and 30, and, and a third, almost a third of your units. and thirty, and, and a third, almost a third of your units are restricted with regard to rent. So this, you can take, by going up a floor, it allows you to take advantage of your efficiencies of scale. I mean, that's, I'll lay it right out there for you.
Understood.
Projects, the best projects, unless they don't make economic sense, no matter what the regs are, just don't happen. You know what I mean? And this is, we believe that, they, they believe that if they get this thing in the ground, get this thing going, they can get this building up and make it, have it make economic sense for them, the town, and hopefully the affordable residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just again, a reminder that this is a text amendment, this is a referral to the zoning. I'm gonna ask, like we do every month, to stay consistent with the P O C D, right? We've, uh, been consistent on it, on all of our determinations. Is there any other questions for Suss Smitha, or Mr. Rizzo?
Suss Smitha, as to the P O C D, uh, how do you view this application?
I think, um, it is consistent with the affordable housing goals and, you know, housing objectives of the P O C D.
Okay, thank you.
Would you agree that it's also consistent with the T O D, being that it's very close, and it's not in our transit, transit-oriented, this transit-oriented district, but it's on and off the highway accessibility?
Yes, I believe you said, um, this thirty percent units, this amount of units, to get us to six point five percent of the ten percent we need, or what was that number again?
Yeah, so at, right now, we are at six point three percent.
Six point three.
And for us to become exempt, we need at least, um, I think our consultant, housing consultant did some math, and he said if we get to four hundred units more, we could, um, seek a moratorium. If we get to eight hundred units more, we could become an exempt ten municipality. Like New Haven is exempt right now, and Bridgeport is exempt right now, because they have more than their fair share, like they have thirty-two percent affordable housing. And the state statute requires at least ten percent, and Stratford doesn't have ten percent yet, right?
I mean, units do we have?
So I think we have around six hundred, five thirty-five to six hundred. And we would need another, um, four hundred more to get a moratorium, like Milford sought a moratorium. Or we would need eight hundred more roughly to actually get to the exempt status.
And my second, I'm sorry, and my second question is, Jay had concerns, but not really, he's leaning toward it, but just was concerned, make sure we, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's, according to our P O C Ds, that?
Yeah, I mean, um, Jay's not completely wrong when he said, when he cited the community character, um, objectives. But, um, you know, yeah, it's going to be a tall building at that intersection. And if you look at the other buildings on Lordship, you, they're not as tall. You have Dunkin' Donuts, you have, you know, research facilities, one or two stories tall, self-storage facilities. So it's definitely going to be, you know, something that is striking when you go to that neighborhood. But it also, like I said, um, there, the P O C D has, um, some objectives on housing, and it touches on housing objectives.
Right, so lastly, that street doesn't have it because it was all industrial. So this is, the hotel was industrial, commercial. So now it's starting to change future tents to use that area as a lot of towns, you know, don't have as much commercial as they used to, so this is a first. And it may be a continuation of things to come on that street. Because equally on that street, you have a taller building, but you have factories that go for blocks, so no one saw that either. So I think, you know, that being taller building doesn't mean it's an eyesore, if you will. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, this is an isolated incident, right? We're only talking, we're not talking about the rest of Lordship Boulevard, just right here.
I think the applicant wants to talk.
Chairman, can I just add one quick thing?
Sure.
That the, the, the stories, like I said, are, will be six, but we're, the, the regulation doesn't govern stories, it governs height, and we're only asking for four feet. And I don't think anyone's gonna be able to tell the difference between sixty-six and seventy feet, except the good news is that it'll block the less desirable, less architecturally significant building that stands beside, beside it. That's, that's all I wanted to add. Stories are not regulated by this, it's height, and the height we're asking for, which gives us the extra stories, is a relief of four feet. Sorry, Chairman.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, we make a, a positive recommendation to the zoning, uh, commission, but that we also make a recommendation that the zoning commission take into account, Suss Smitha Atara's report, um, dated November twentieth, Jay Hibansky's report dated November twenty-first, and the original, um, text amendment approval points that we had spelled out, uh, from the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Uh, and I, I think, uh, that's my motion.
Would anybody like to make a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Folks, thank you very much for your time, really appreciate your input.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for letting us go to the head to the next item.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is item five, eight dash twenty-five, twenty-four review, Town Council referral, to consider an act on a referral of the Bruce Brook Flood Mitigation Project to the Planning Commission for, uh, oh, sorry, that's us, for review pursuant of, uh, General Statute eight dash twenty-four. First, I'm looking for a motion to open this agenda, um, for discussion.
Motion to open, William Boyd.
Second.
Sarah, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Atara, if you don't mind?
Thank you. So, um, this is a referral by Stratford Town Council to act on a potential acquisition of easements on multiple private properties, uh, near Bruce Brook. Roughly, um, there are twelve properties listed, and I enclosed a map identifying where, what properties are included in this. So, um, Bruce Jackson, Town Attorney, Assistant Town Attorney sent a memo, uh, to me describing their plans for this. This has been a project that has been ongoing for several years and aimed at addressing flooding concerns in that area of the town, um, due to Bruce Brook. It involves widening and straightening Bruce Brook and requires acquiring private land, um, from, um, these properties to provide temporary easements for construction and permanent easements for access and maintenance. So they're going to essentially widen Bruce Brook up to ten feet wide. And, um, possibly this will help solve the flooding issue there. And acquisition of easements on private properties, um, would typically require an additional review by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission should be making a recommendation to the Town Council, whether it's favorable or unfavorable. If it is favorable, um, then it passes, um, I mean, with less words at the Town Council, if it's unfavorable, they would need more, more words to override it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
And, and I just wanna,
Absolutely.
Spell out one last thing, it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development objectives.
Thank you. Is everybody familiar with the Bruce Brook Flood Mitigation? Anybody have any questions for Suss Smitha? Looking for a motion?
I'll, uh, make a motion that we make a favorable recommendation on this item to the Town Council. My second, William Boyd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Next item is item seven, bond release request. This is a request for a partial bond release for the four-lot subdivision on two eight six three Broadbridge Avenue and Steck, Steckfus Road, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars by applicant Romano Brothers Builders LLC. First, I'm looking for a motion to open this agenda item for discussion.
Sarah, I make a motion to open this for discussion.
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Atara, again, if you don't mind?
So, um, this commission has approved, um, to, a subdivision, a five-lot subdivision at two eight six three Broadbridge Avenue and Streckfus Road last year. And, um, the developer has been, uh, working on this project, and, um, he sent an email to John Casey, our town engineer, on October twenty-fourth, saying that the following work has been completed, which is the anti-track paths, silt fence, soil erosion and sediment control maintenance, tomwater retention, and, and, you know, they wanted to, um, request a partial bond release. They posted the bond, and with the understanding that if the work has not been completed satisfactorily, then the town can use that money to actually build it to standards. The town engineer approved of it. They also are requesting, um, a modification of site, uh, site plan approval, which will be coming as a public hearing item next month. Because, you know, uh, the town engineer in a staff report said that they should be building sidewalks on Broadbridge Avenue. But the issue is that there is a street tree there, and when the applicant submitted the drawings to the commission, they didn't have any sidewalk on that, and that was the plan that the Conservation Superintendent reviewed, and she thought the street tree would remain. But now, because the commission conditioned their approval, saying that they should adhere to Town Engineer's comments on sidewalks, he's required to build that sidewalk, which means that he has to take out the street tree. And if, in order to take out the street tree, they have to go through a public hearing process, and the, i- it's complicated. So we talked to our, uh, Town Attorney, um, Pat Sullivan, including the, um, you know, applicant, and Conservation Superintendent, and Town Engineer, and myself, and we came to an agreement that because there is no continuity of sidewalks on that side of the street on Broadbridge Avenue, just having that piece over there, um, is beneficial, but at the same time, it limits possibilities for anything to happen right now in the north or the south. So maybe the applicant should be donating, um, I mean, redirecting the funds to the town sidewalk bond fund, so that when the town is ready to build sidewalks on that side of the street, they can use that money to build, um, the entire stretch. Which means that now, in this, um, bond release, we are asking, uh, the applicant to redirect, uh, the nine thousand six hundred dollars that, that he has posted for concrete sidewalks towards the sidewalk bond fund. And that's why it's not a full bond release, but it's a partial bond release that, you know, he's requesting today, which is in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one thirty dollars.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the, the partial, the other nine thousand six hundred dollars is going to go towards the sidewalk bond fund?
And that's a separate process, and that has to, you, you have to have a, a legal ad posted, and it's a modification of site plan approval, which means it's a public hearing process, so next month would be a public hearing on that.
Okay. With, of course, the recommendation from?
The Town Engineer. And the Conservation Superintendent.
You all following? Is there any questions?
So if we, uh, make a motion to approve this, that motion would include the fact that, um, the ninety-six hundred dollars would go to the bond fund if it goes through the proper process?
No, I'm just explaining why this is a partial bond release. So it has nothing to do with the ninety-six hundred going automatically anywhere. So he's just asking, he's just leaving that ninety-six hundred in the bond still, but he's just asking the remaining funds to be released, that's all. So he posted sixty-seven thousand, five eighty dollars, and he's only requesting fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars as part of partial bond release. I don't think he posted that, and I, I could be wrong on that. But I, I, I think today, you know, he's, yeah, i- i- he just said whatever he requested, a hundred, uh, One thirty dollars.
The, uh, Town Engineer has confirmed that everything else was done here, so we're, okay. So I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation on this. I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Um, so instead of making any recommendations, we have the capacity to approve this bond release?
For the clarification of Finance Department, maybe you would wanna spell out what's on agendas, that you're approving a partial bond release for the four-lot subdivision on two eight six three Broadbridge Avenue and Streckfus Road in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one thirty, as requested by applicant Romano Brothers Builders. Because they wanna be very specific on everything.
Okay, so I, I'll all change that motion. So we'd like, I'd like to make a motion, um, that we approve the partial bond release for the four-lot subdivision at twenty-eight sixty-three Broadbridge Avenue and Streckfus Road in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars by applicant Romano Brothers Builders LLC.
Sarah, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item, item eight on the agenda, the implementation plans for the Greenway and Complete Streets Committee. Mr. Atara, do you have anything to update us on this?
Yes, two things. First is that I'm very sorry to inform you that one of our Greenway Committee members, Karen Roria, passed away a few weeks ago. And, um, it's very unfortunate, and, um, sorry to say that she's been a very active member of this committee for a long, long time. She was involved in the Greenway Phase One, and, you know, now the Phase Two. So very unfortunate. The second thing I wanted to say is that, um, the Phase Two work is going on at full speed. Phase Two of Complete Streets starts from Barnum Avenue intersection all the way to, um, Wilcoxon Avenue. Actually, Windsor Avenue is the boundary. So, um, the Economic Department Director, myself, Jay Hibansky, Planning and Zoning Administrator, um, Town Engineer, and, um, Chief of, um, I'm sorry, um, Grants Administrator Molly Ryan, and Consultants, and, um, MetroCOC staff, we all walked the entire route, uh, two weeks back, and we looked at the proposed thirty percent designs, and we were actually able to relate to what the drawings were suggesting and what the field conditions were. And so it was an interesting, uh, observation. There are some slopes, and there are some utility lines, and there are some, you know, broken curbs and sidewalks, and some, uh, you know, um, decisions to be made on whether a driveway should be kept open or should be, you know, blocked, um, you know, with curbing. So it was a very, um, interesting discussion, and now the consultant is going back and, you know, reviewing the drawings. We also reached out to the Paradise Green Businesses, uh, for a stakeholder meeting, although we don't have a date penciled in yet, but we are trying to hold a meeting, um, with the, um, business stakeholders first to know what their concerns are, before we also reach out to the residents and, um, other, um, interested parties nearby for another follow-up meeting. And, um, I think, you know, it's coming along. And like you can see, the work that's going on in front of the town hall right now is the Phase One Complete Streets work that is going on. Complete Streets work that is going on right now. And our Greenway project is also simultaneously going on in full speed. There's construction going on on Elm Street, and things are happening, which is positive.
Any questions? Ms. Graham, anything to add? Thank you all for your hard work on that and continuing this project. Item nine, other items, Plan of Conservation and Development, P O C D. Ms. Atara, is there anything left?
We closed the contract. We're all done with the consultants. Trying to get some hard copies for distribution, figuring out how we can pay for them and if they will be willing to, you know, pay for some of those copies. We're not going to do the second video anymore because we, in our budget, we had allocated for another video, but, you know, it's way past the timeline and, you know, it just, things didn't happen the way they should have happened. So now we're going to redirect the resources towards printing the copies. Our new plan becomes effective from December first. So I'm thankful for this commission, for all your hard work on that. That's something you have left behind as your legacy for the next ten years for the town. Thank you very much.
And I agree. Thank you all for your hard work. And Sis Smitha, your very hard work. It's unbelievable. All in all, FHI Studios did a great job, I think. I think we did it on time. We did it thoroughly, so thank you all again. At this point, I wanna wish everybody a very happy and healthy and safe Thanksgiving, and enjoy yourselves. Yes.
Like I said before, we probably would need to hold a public hearing next month. And I know it's the time of the holidays where most people travel. So if this body is interested in a special meeting, I mean, I have to also look at the statutory timelines for legal ads. So I have to post a legal ad like two days before and then at least fifteen days before. So roughly, like if we're looking at December second week, I can just start getting that legal ad right away. Is, is this body interested in holding a meeting during the week of December tenth to fifteenth as opposed to December nineteenth?
Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, there's a few members, congratulations, Mr. Aurelia, that will be going into the council on the eleventh, so I don't think that's gonna work that week, December eleventh.
Oh, so your term ends on January first, right?
Correct, but the, the ceremony's on the eleventh.
Eleventh, but any other day, like twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth? I have to go back and check if the chamber is available.
Me, I'd prefer, I'd prefer to do it the following week, myself.
Okay, so the nineteenth. And how many of you cannot make it on the nineteenth? I need a quorum. Okay. So as long as we have three members, we have a quorum.
With all that being said, keep on your calendar the nineteenth. Do your best, please. Same time, same place. It's, it's actually, it's the posted next meeting. It's already, you know, that's on, on our current agenda today. It says on the bottom, next meeting is December nineteenth. And again, happy Thanksgiving. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Sarah, I second it.
All in favor? Aye.